Good evening. At the White Murmurs Council Meeting, would you please join us in the Pledge of Independence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor of the meeting order and open the roll call.
Goodell.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Rusher.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
We need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Move and approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2014 regular council meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. And we need a motion to approve the Treasuries monthly investment report and the March Treasuries report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. And last, we need a motion to approve the claims for March. Does anybody's got any questions?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. Under communications, anything from the public in attendance this evening? If not, we move on to new business. First order of business, we need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class C liquor license for Pasquale's Italian Restaurant doing businesses at Pasquale's Pizza. Do they need an order of the re-?
Yes, it is.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. And we need a motion to approve a proposed notice of violation form for show removal and premise maintenance violations.
This is the actual language for the ticket that would be used for the ordinance that will be considered later in the meeting. This ticket is the language that Eric provided, recommended that he felt the city council should use before it was implemented. The ordinance will actually be the $50 fine and that, again, that's for junk sidewalks not being shoveled and for parking on the grass, things like that.
Lawn exceeding ten.
Or lawn exceeding 10 inches. So.
Move and approve.
So is it parking on the grass or?
No, lawn exceeding. Parking on the grass is the other ticket.
Okay, got it. We've already got that, Bill.
Yeah, we've already got that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. And that would go into a second round.
We have to.
After the past three readings again for.
Yeah, and then.
Yep. Hopefully we don't have to worry about shovel and the grass.
Should be in between the two. The junk's already there, though, so it'd be nice to have that.
Go after the junk. Under resolutions, we need a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 35, a resolution directing the acceptance of a proposal to purchase $1,885,000 in general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2014A.
Scott's here.
Scott? Can you throw over that with us, please?
Yep. I have Scott Stevenson with DA Davidson. Just give you a quick overview. The resolution you've got is essentially conveys authorizing a note purchase agreement, which would be the agreement where the city offers to sell bonds and we offer to buy the bonds, locks in your interest rates and all the terms of the financing, which I can give you kind of a rundown of the summary essentially of that. So the size of the financing actually dropped down to 1,870,000 is all we needed to accomplish the two goals that we were trying to accomplish, the financing, one being funding $1.2 million for your street projects for the summer and then refinancing your 2007 TIF revenue notes. So the refinancing of the TIF revenue notes produced $49,500 in savings over the remaining six years, but that bond issue is going to remain outstanding. You'll see that savings in each of those years that it is going to mature from the upcoming fiscal year 1415 through 2020 when it is paid off in full. The other $1.2 million pays off over a five-year timeframe. The average interest rate on the transaction as a whole came in at 1.78% inclusive of our fee. So, you know, anytime you can borrow money at less than 2%, people generally view that as a good indicator. On the whole, we were pretty happy with how the bond issue was received. I guess on a side note, Standard and Poor's did recently upgrade the city from previous rating to giving a positive outlook. I think that was probably a result of building up your general fund balance into the black. I think if you continue to see positive results or a surplus in both the current fiscal year and the year you budgeted for in 1415, you'll see your rating actually get upgraded into the A category again, which certainly views as a positive thing as well.
What are we now?
Currently triple B plus with a positive outlook.
Okay.
Which is still low investment grade, so I mean, it's not speculative or anything like that, but I think the view is when your general fund is at a deficit, they look at that as being a tight liquidity position or budgetary flexibility, so something might come up and you had to plug a hole somewhere for some reason unforeseen. Your general fund is what provides you with the greatest level of liquidity and thus that's kind of a metric that rating agencies commonly look at. So that, you know, I guess I'd look at that as a good thing, you know, relative to where you were at, you know, you're building back into a situation that's positive. This transaction was short enough, we didn't pursue a credit rating and still able to, like I said, get rates below 2%, so I, you know, not sure we would have seen that much value from getting a credit rating even if we could have gotten an A category rating for this deal, but in future years, you know, inevitably you'll have some other borrowing need, it's going to extend out for a longer period of time and that's when you'll see the value in having a credit rating in the A category.
Is it the short timeframe, the fact that you got a five-year payback is what is really bringing the cost down?
Correct. Yep. I think, you know, we just have seen where, and this is just more of an indication of the general market, the, what we call the yield curve, where rates for short-term borrowing have been essentially at 0%, depending on how short of a term you're talking about. The Fed funds rate, something you hear in the news if you look on Fox News, has been at 0% for several years now, so that keeps short-term rates down. Fed funds rates and overnight borrowing rate, as you extend out five, 10, 15, 20 years, you know, you'll see higher interest rates, which that's what makes the yield curve. Being only a five-year total amortization on this transaction is very short by municipal bond standards, maybe see a lot of deals that are 10, 15, or 20 years. Anyway, the result of being a shorter timeframe has caused you to have a much lower interest rate. You have any questions?
Voice good as ever.
That's right. Well, thanks. Appreciate the business and do you have any questions? Please let me know.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Move to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 36, a resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding urban renewal revenue capital loan notes, Series 2007A, in City One Bay, dated May 1st, 2007, and direct and notice be given.
Just cause the old debt be refunded with new issues.
Move to approve?
Roll call vote.
Slater.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Next, we have a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 37, a resolution approving an agreement with Jeff Weiss doing businesses Weiss Septic Plumbing Pumping and Hauling in Barnum, Iowa for the discharge of fluid into the city sanitary sewer treatment system.
This agreement will simply allow the company to use the Humboldt wastewater treatment plant for the normal per gallon charge by dumping at the main hall next to the main lift station. This gentleman is taking over for my crew's equipment.
Move and approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 38, a resolution approving change order number one from Stony Creek Landscapes of Webster City, Iowa, in the amount of $200 for the 2013 611, 613, and 615 Summer Avenue landscaping project for a net increase to the contract of $200.
This change order was needed for favors around the date zone and the ground. Bricks were not kept from the demolition as planned and papers needed to be cut and substituted for that portion of it.
But none of these guys?
Next, we move.
More resolution.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 39, a resolution accepting the project as complete and approving passment number four, final retainage from Stony Creek Landscapes of Webster City, Iowa, in the amount of $700 for the 2013 611, 1315 Summer Avenue landscaping project.
Final payment of retainage, they finished the punch list, it was supplied by the engineer and we're done.
Move and approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 40, a resolution approving passment number 21 from Industrial Process Technology Incorporated Fargo, North Dakota, in the amount of $57,415.11 for the 2012 Humboldt Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project.
The work of the water plant continues to move at a decent pace. IPT is working on getting everything together to start up the well side of the plant in the next few weeks. The underground tanks are being removed and they will soon be, soon start working on grading the site. I guess in addition, since I completed the notes, you'll see there's a letter in front of you from the DNR, notice to the mayor and council. It's kind of blindsided myself, the engineer, and frankly, everyone involved with this project. The DNR is seeking a $10,000 fine against the city for delay on the construction project for the water plant renovation. This, the engineer's comment was, this is pretty unheard of, that we're in an active construction project with a contractor trying to resolve the issues and DNR is seeking a fine against us. The city was actually in the process of engineering the plant before the DNR even stated that we needed to engineer a plant, so we were taking action before they even declared us a surface water plant or under the influence of surface water. And so I don't know how we could be operating any quicker than we actually are considering we had a head start by several months on the DNR action that they asked for, removing the tanks, upgrading the plant, et cetera. So Lance with Fox Engineering is working on supplying a response to this. It's called, I think it's a consent decree or a consent order.
Consent order.
And so obviously I'm assuming that the city council does not want to consent to the $10,000 fine, so I've got Lance crafting a response to all of the statements in there. Some of them are a perfect example, as they stated that we didn't do the testing as the DNR ordered. Well, the reason we didn't do the testing is we'd already failed one of the tests according to their, the parameters of the test as they laid out, so we stopped doing the test because the DNR said, there's no, there's no point in doing the test. Why even waste doing it? We're going to put you in under the surface water, under the influence of surface water. And so we stopped doing the test after conversations with the DNR. Then they came back in the consent order and say, well, you didn't do all the tests we told you to take. So there's lots of little things like this that are very interesting and, you know, it's a, I think it's a situation where the left hand's not talking to the right hand within DNR, because we've worked very closely with a lot of the DNR staff to make sure that we were in compliance and that we were working as fast as we could to rectify any of the issues that they had with the water plant. You know, the, I think the, the letter, the response that we'll probably end up needing to send back to the DNR is something along the lines of, yes, fine us $10,000 if we don't have the plant completed by May 31st. In that case, you know, then we're way beyond the deadline and that makes sense, but before that, you know, understand that we're in a contract with the contractor and working as fast as we can. I mean, realistically, the only recourse we would have would be to terminate the contract and re-dead the work, which would clearly not be any quicker than working with the current contractor. And additionally, the contractor that is working on the water plant is working as about as quickly as you can. You know, the delays that they've run into are the same delays that, you know, the state agencies run into with the DOT and the DNR and everybody else. It's a construction project. They don't always, you know, stay on schedule as anybody else, so. Just really surprising, like I said, it caught, you know, people who work on these plants all the time off guard, because there's nothing more the city could be doing to be compliant than what we are, so it makes you wonder what's the point of the fine? You know, what are they actually trying to achieve with that $10,000 fine? There's no compliance that we're not trying, that we're not working towards.
I know the governor will be here next Wednesday. Meeting with him, Aaron's going to meet with him and stuff for towns. I know this will definitely be a question that gets proposed anyway. Now, this is no different than our landfill that we're being fined a million dollars on for really no reason whatsoever, but they just seem to like to do fines right now anyways, maybe that's a big deal for them.
Money ensure revenue, huh?
Yeah, sure. But what good does it do to fine in the first place? I don't know where the money goes. I don't know. If you're supposed to penalize the citizens, you know, if that's, I don't even understand how that's even a good judgment to do that. This is the same thing. What, what good does it do to finance when we're working as hard as we can work on the plant? And we're doing everything that we possibly can, spending $8 million to renovate everything and then we get a $10,000 fine for trying to make it better? You know, it just, nothing the government does surprises me, just. But anyway.
Well, the amounts of the payments are getting smaller anyway.
What percentage, can you tell me that all, what percentage do we have?
I think it's probably close to 90. I mean, a lot of this is, you know, I think the last big thing was really demolishing the underground tanks. A lot of it's just, it's going to get smaller and smaller, where you're picking at little things, getting the well side operational, you know, making sure all the equipment works correctly. You know, if you've got some grading, there's a little bit of the, I call it the EFS, I don't think it's actually EFS, but the coating system on the outside that needs to be finished. I think there's a little bit of that. And so they're punchless in the scope of this project, they're punchless. I mean, a lot of these things are not, you know, any of the large equipment doesn't need to be brought in. Most of the equipments, you know, the electricals were in, you know, the process equipment's there, but just getting those final pumps in, you know, final pipes in, things like that, so. We're getting very, very close, but, you know, getting a plant to operate. The spring side, I think, took about three weeks to get all the kinks worked out and get it fully operational, so, I mean, I'm guessing we'll probably, even from the point that they say, okay, kick it on, you've probably got three weeks and just get your bones out with it.
We have a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Slater.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Next, we need a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 41, a resolution approving the final plans and specifications for the Summer Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project and directing the city clerk to publish a notice of public hearing and letting and set 5:30 PM, Monday, May 5th, 2014, as a time and date for a public hearing to review bids.
As you can see, the resolution sets the date for the hearing on the Summer Avenue project. You have the plan specs in front of you for your review. They contain all of the discussions from the previous meetings. I actually had in my notes that we were arguing about full relocation costs, but the Mid-American has actually since said that they agree with the city and they agree with Eric, and so they've decided to accept the costs as their cost for this project and that's one of the last hurdles out of the way with that part of the project. So, you'll see, the design, the structural, if you look at the S pages, that's really, I think, the most interesting. That shows the retaining wall and kind of the railing and things like that. Again, it's all based off of the texturing of the bridge and tying in those aspects. David Docstead with INS has been in touch with Stan Stal Smith from WHKS and making sure that they're using similar forms and everything like that, so. They've got a very nice plan in place. There's, the way that he's got the water routed off of the sidewalk will require two easements, kind of in that sprout, the brushy area there, right off Summer Avenue, probably about 50 feet up from the driveway. There's, the property lines come pretty close to Summer Avenue there, and so the rock, the water naturally kind of goes through there, so we need easement for the rock to channel the water down through that area and through the culvert next to, or underneath the driveway for the water plant. And that's the only thing that's really outstanding, other than obviously taking it for good and individual project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Next, we need a motion to approve the following proposed resolution number 2014 dash 42, a resolution offering myself to sign a joint application with the Rock Island District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the Summer Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project.
The joint application is needed to do the work being so close to the river, it's further to the point, there's some fill work and some, you know, just some altering of a, grading of a landscape there. Anytime you're that close, you're, you're going to end up working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer and everybody else, so. Just need to turn that in so that lands are compliant.
Move and approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Under ordinances, we need a motion to approve the first reading of the following proposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances to the city of Humboldt Iowa by many chapter one pertaining to the Code of Ordinance standard penalties.
This will allow the city to issue fines through the ticket system that was mentioned earlier for parking, junk, sorry, I keep saying parking, grass, junk, and sidewalk violations. The fine is $50 per violation.
How long do they have to comply? Is there, what is the writing on that? I mean, do they have five days to?
Zero.
Zero.
The point that you're out of compliance. The limit is the.
No, I mean, after they get the ticket, how long? For them to clean it up before they would get another one?
Well, technically, you could issue it the next day, but I mean, we can work with the officers to make sure it's not.
Okay, so basically, basically a person has 24 hours.
Yeah.
To take care of her situation if they've been fined.
And so the, the grass height is 10 inches, so, I mean, that's, you give them a decent amount of time at that point, and I'm not talking one blade. You know, when I, when I normally look at it, I look at, you know, overall, is most of the grass in about, you know, 10 inches and then.
And that's pretty tall.
It's pretty tall. You are hiding.
They couldn't mow 10 inches.
You are hiding bourbon at that point.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think it's all within reason. I mean, there's, obviously, if there's a few things in the yard, that doesn't really condone, or it doesn't make it worth going out and doing the junk, but we, everybody knows there's places across town that.
You know what? Maybe we'll get some, maybe we'll get some people's attention.
Yeah, I think.
Because it's been ignored for a long time.
Well, and the officers have honestly been.
No, they've been working.
They've been working with them and they've been chasing their tail on some of the stuff. And really, you got to get teeth behind this so that they don't end up wasting their time, you know, trying to talk to somebody and them not listening. So there's several properties across town that, you know, we were in the situation where we're taking them to court and paying, you know, we're paying Eric a decent amount of money. He does a good job with them, but we're paying him a decent amount of money to take him to court, then, you know, just so he says, well, you know, you need to get this cleaned up. They cleaned it up and then six months later, we're back at the same point and we've spent more money than they have. And so it just makes sense, you know, honestly, if they're not going to take care of their property, you know, put it to a situation where you have a ticket and if they still disregard it, then they can take it to court with those tickets, and so then you're going to at least recoup some of your cost, so.
Well, we can make money also if we're going to be spending our time on it, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, none of those ordinance enforced, I mean, to dispel any sort of idea that it's generating revenue for the city, I mean, the amount of money that you spend in legal fees trying to enforce a code, you know, code enforcement is way more than you're actually making off any of this, so I think in a small way, it helps offset some of those things as far as, you know, sending, you know, myself and Eric and Steve out to go mow the properties, so.
They won't laugh as much at the ticket maybe as they laugh at the others.
Yeah, exactly.
For the $50, you get their attention.
Okay.
Move and approve?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Goodell.
Aye.
Slater.
Aye.
Rusher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
That's the last of our regularly scheduled items. Jerry?
I guess, just, I sent out an email to the council about the, kind of where the bridge is at. I included Kent kind of on that, just so he had a heads up. Obviously, the signs are out for the four-way stop down on 169. Those were covered by the DOT, they paid to put, or they used their equipment to put it up, which saved the city a decent amount of money, because the sign is somewhat, pretty expensive, they're about a hundred bucks a day to sign. So that was a good deal. The DOT's supplying most of the equipment for that four-way stop. The city has to purchase and install the overhead flashing four-way beacon in the middle of the intersection. We can reuse that, though, because it's the same as Wildcat Road and we're responsible for Wildcat Road, so if there's ever, you know, once that light starts having some difficulties, we'll have a replacement parts for it. As far as bridge demolition, it's been a popular topic of conversation. I've talked with Greg Darling, obviously sent it to the council. I get everywhere I turn, I get asked, I'm sure it's the same thing for you guys. It's still very much up in the air. CenturyLink is still on the bridge, they're working to get off the bridge.
They're pulling fiber cables.
Yeah.
They're pulling cables, so.
We're, Gaberson Smith was about as stern with them as you can get. I mean, they, they said, you know, you realize you could blow up this project if you wait any longer, or if you don't push this any harder, and I think that they get it now. The gentleman who was at the pre-construction meeting seemed like he got it, you know, when you figure you're in a pre-construction meeting and there's about 20 people standing around staring at you and saying, we can't do anything until you get out of here. Something that popped up, though, is Mid-American actually realized there might be asbestos in the pipe, and so that delayed work because they had to file a new permit and had to wait 10 days for that permit to take effect. And so they are now getting close to the same timeframe as CenturyLink, so that's unfortunate, but it doesn't, I don't think it really changes much, because we're still waiting for CenturyLink to get off the bridge, too, so I guess that's one good thing. But the, I think the demolition, they might close the bridge for demolition either possibly the end of this week, which I think is really unlikely considering what I just told you, or next week. They are going to try and get as much done as they can prior to the utilities leaving the bridge, so whatever, whatever they can take care of, they will. They're very concerned with the Topeka Shiner requirements, limiting their ability to build the causeway and get the piers in place. They want to get out of the water so that they can continue to work during that three, that several months that they're restricted from stream bed access.
Can they build the causeways now or not till the bridge is off the way?
They use the old bridge as the causeway, so they drop the bridge and then move it to where they need it and continue to fill and then build, use the crane from that location to build the new bridge, which actually surprised me and the engineer at the same time. But the demolition, the schedule for demolition is going to be very quick, so I think the bridge will actually leave in, you know, maybe a few days, a week.[1727.87] They said they, they come down pretty fast once they get working on it. And then they're, they're probably going to work, work in some late nights to get out of the water in the timeframe for, I think it was May fifteenth or nineteenth, is when the, the apartment's kicking. So, not, it, there's a lot up in the air, but, um.
I think the. I'm curious what the fine would be for the Topeka Shiner, since we're getting fined ten thousand dollars for, uh, non-compliance on the water.
I can tell you, and, and there was a cliff swallow that was U.S. Fish and Wildlife fined four hundred thousand dollars for disrupt, for knocking down a endangered bird's nest. So I can assure you that if you mess with any endangered species, you're talking about outrageous fines.
I don't think they can find a shiner in that river.
Well, they'd have to prove it first. There, it's not listed on the, uh, federal register as a place that actually has shiners in it. Of cour, I mean, if you, if you ever want to have a fun conversation, talk, talk to Paul Jacobson about this, because he is absolutely livid, because this is our only bridge, so at this point, we really don't care. We're good for ninety years once we're done with this, but he's going to be fighting this for the next, you know, well, forever. I mean, as long as Humboldt County is listed, which it shouldn't be, is listed according to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, then these requirements will be in perpetuity. Without ever there, without ever one dollar being spent in research to find out if there was any shiners in that river.
If there was one, the four thousand geese would have eaten it.
One of the walleye that could dump in there.
The walleye feed off of them.
So. Anyway, that's what I know on the bridge.
Anything else?
No.
Lori, anything?
Um, no, we've got brush cleanup and junk cleanup coming up. Brush is, um, the week of April twenty-eighth, and May fifth is the junk cleanup, and I can't remember when the burn date.
April twelve.
April twelfth is the burn date.
So, oh, and just a reminder that, so we're doing the same appliance and electronic pickup, so if anybody, um, wants to, to have those picked up curbside, they have to have a sticker on them by the time that we start junk pickup, otherwise they will not be picked up, so.
Still five dollars is it?
Still five bucks. No, I've got.
Five bucks per?
Yeah, five bucks per, uh, sticker, and just gets slapped on the side of whatever needs to get picked up.
No, I don't.
Brett?
Nope.
No.
John?
No, I don't.
With that, we need a motion to schedule Monday, April twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, at five thirty PM is the date, time, and date, we're going to bring the Humboldt City Council, and during this session at six oh five PM. So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.